Evening. Welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the first, two thousand and twenty-four. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask you to stand, and then we're going to ask Justin to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Thank.
The flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic of which it stands, one nation under God.
The first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just take the point of personal privileges to want to send out a big thank you to our emergency crews and our road department for their efforts with the recent storms that we've had here. I know that the road department was quite busy with trees down in the roads. And I also want to thank the, a lot of our local citizens have kind of come to the chart, you know, getting up supplies and taking it to the affected areas. So I want to give a shout out to those citizens of Oconee County that are doing that on behalf of the people that are suffering in other parts of the state. But I just want to go and send out a big thank you to those people.
It's a good lead into, the city of Bogart is loading up a tractor trailer to go to Augusta. And they'll be taking donations again tomorrow and Thursday from eight AM to four PM. Can take something by there, that'd be great. Also, on October fourteenth from three to seven at Heritage Park will be a bat festival. It was like a fun thing to go do, and there are plenty of bats out there, I've seen them myself. Town hall meeting, October the eighth, will be here in this room. That will be six PM, October the eighth. Next item is approve the minutes from September tenth and September twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is presentation of proclamation recognizing National 4-H Week and Master 4-H Award winners. We're going to ask Arden to read the proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, glad to do that. The proclamation for National 4-H Week, whereas the young people of Georgia and Oconee County are our greatest national resource. And whereas the 4-H program has assisted in the growth and development of Georgia and Oconee County used for more than one hundred and fifteen years. And whereas adult volunteer leaders and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas Oconee County 4-H grows true leaders and entices young people and adults to become involved in the educational and entertaining projects offered by the 4-H program in Oconee County. Through the University of Georgia College of Ag and Environmental Sciences, the co-op extension. Now therefore, we, the Oconee County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of October seventh through twelfth of this year as National 4-H Week in Oconee County. And we urge all citizens to observe this important event and give it the attention to which it so rightly is entitled. And witness thereof, we here on to set our hand and cause the seal of Oconee County to be affixed this day. John Daniel Chairman and Holly Stevenson County Clerk.
Congratulations. Jeffy Hartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. It's always a pleasure to come out to be able to speak to y'all with National 4-H Week coming up. You know, since I've been working in Oconee County for about four years, something that's very apparent in this county is we always are breaking records. And looking back at my last couple speeches, I've talked about our numbers as far as our program goes. Kids at camp, contacts that we've had in our wonderful school system, hours of community service and leadership opportunities and positions that have been held. But as I tell our 4-Hers, you don't want to reuse the same speech. So I've swapped it up a little bit this year, and I did want to just kind of talk about a couple of things in the county that our 4-Hers have been a part of. And talk about our wonderful students that are here today that are being recognized by y'all, and we thank y'all for that. So I know that y'all know this, how special our county is, and it truly is a privilege to work here. The people, community, culture and standards are second to none in the state. It's a wonderful place to work, and these 4-Hers that are joining me here tonight have worked tirelessly to earn their Master 4-H status. Or represent and run and represent on a district level at the board that they're a part of with 4-H. I know when I was in school, and I kind of hate to admit this, but you know, I realized working with these youth that I didn't work half as hard as they did in school. And it's amazing to see how much work they put in twenty-four hours a day. Like, these kids are special, and it's something that I think that, you know, they're a wonderful, wonderful example of the members of our community, and I'm thankful that they're being honored tonight. I also want to take a second, recognize the parents that are sitting with them. The parents in our program is our foundation for what our program rests on. They're wonderful, supporting us, getting their kids to and from the countless 4-H events they attend. I know they get a million emails from me, and it's always nice for them to stop by our office and just chat with us. Especially this last year, I felt like our little community of 4-Hers and families have grown, grown real close together. And it's nice to see, you know, being here for a while, the progression that each one of these students has carried on throughout the years. You know, I'm looking forward to this next year. We were excited about what's coming up. I mentioned, you know, breaking our records, and we're looking forward to breaking them again this year with our camp, camps that we're going to have. And being able to kind of get into our project achievement series. Mentioned to Chairman Daniel earlier, we were in the Oconee County Elementary School. Me and Officer Candy were talking, and we came out of our club meetings today. And just the feeling in Oconee County is awesome, being able to meet with these kids each week, and it just means a lot. The quality of kid that you have is second to none. So thank y'all for recognizing them. Chairman Daniel, do you want me to read out the list, or?
Yeah, we'll come out front, we got some certificates for them.
Awesome. All right, so tonight, we're going to be recognizing some 4-Hers that have joined us. A couple of them weren't able to make us, one is in, at school in Montana, so she couldn't get a flight out for this. And the other one had a ferrier that came out to her house, but we'll still read their names as well. So the first 4-Her I'm going to recognize tonight is McCall Woodruff. She's a three-time Master 4-Her this past year. She mastered in project achievement in the beef category. She mastered in horse quiz bowl, and she also mastered in the key award. The next 4-Her I'll recognize is Sawyer Mathis, our most recent 4-H member. Won the master status in chicken barbecue, one of the first, yeah. So if you need a barbecue recipe, talk to Sawyer Mathis, he knows how to cook. Next up, we have Tyson Mathis, who represented us on the national stage at 4-H National Conference as a delegate. And then the last three are members of our horse quiz bowl team that aren't able to be with us tonight. Danica Heater, Molly Smith and Julia Smith. They were awesome, and they'll be competing in January in Denver at the national level at horse quiz bowl. It's the most intense contest we have, it's awesome. So, and the last person I want to recognize is Ms. Josie Ross, and she was our elected official as the Northeast District 4-H Junior Board Member this year. So, yeah. Awesome. Thank y'all so much for having us out tonight, we'll grab a picture.
Right now, we'll move into our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Our first item is rezon request P twenty-four dash zero zero one six Sapphire Properties Rentals. Quests to rezone from AG to R1 seventeen point three eight seven acres at twenty-eight eighty Monroe Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have received a request to table this until the November fifth meeting. The board will need to take action on that request to table.
Any questions, a guy on that? Go entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we table P twenty-four oh one one six until November fifth.
Second.
Motion second to table, in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is P rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two eight, two eight seven. Christian and Philip Gibson request to modify conditions of a previous rezon, which was P twenty dash zero one four three. Two point four eight acres located at ten thirty Garrett Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is rezon number P twenty-three zero two eight seven. Kristen and Philip Gibson, applicant and owner. This is parcel A zero one zero seven six B A. It's currently zoned AR in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is to change the condition of a previous zoning case number P twenty zero one four three that was zoned to AR. The requested change is to remove the condition number three, which states a one-foot no access easement on proposed track one along Georgia Highway fifty-three shall be recorded at the time of administrative subdivision. This is the plat that was recorded in conjunction with the application, January of twenty-one, showing the one-foot no access easement. This is the concept plan that was submitted with your application packet, showing the location of the existing non-conforming structure and existing drive and the existing house and driveway. Property was rezoned AR on October sixth, two thousand and twenty, to create a two-lot subdivision. There was a dirt driveway accessing Highway fifty-three that existed at the time of rezoning. It was used as the driveway for the manufactured home that was on the property since nineteen eighty-five. Previous property owner, Stephen Dickinson, applied to build a one thousand eight square foot garage on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is actually the aerial photo dated January seventh of two thousand and twenty-two, showing the garage was already under construction at the time the garage permit was applied for on four twenty-nine. Just a slightly larger version of that same photo. The tax assessor's photo, four thirteen twenty-two, showing the building without permits. And comments were issued by the planning on the garage permit application on May seventh. The homeowner never resubmitted items to address the comments. The current owners acquired the property on May twentieth. According to tax assessor records and data photos, current owners continued construction work without a permit after they acquired the property. Tax assessor documented on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, that an additional single-family home was constructed without permits on the property with a size of one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Notice of violation was issued on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, this is the tax assessor documented residential structure on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff analysis indicates that the proposed guest house could be permitted and meet UDC requirements if the applicant extends the driveway for the primary residence to the rear of the property. There is a clear plus or minus twenty-three feet between the HVAC unit beside the primary structure residence to the side property line to extend the existing driveway. If that were done, then the change of zoning conditions and a variance on the guest house driveway would not be necessary. If that were done, then the change of zoning conditions and a variance on the guest house driveway would not be necessary. Again, this is the site plan that was submitted and are showing 26, approximately 26 feet between the HVAC and the side property line. That could be used to access the proposed building. These are architectural renderings of the existing building. And staff's recommendation, based on the Board of Commissioners' policies, decision-making criteria, and standards outlined in the Development Codes of Oconee County, staff recommends denial of the request to delete condition number three and allow an additional driveway to access Georgia Highway 53 for the property due to the following. The same staff analysis that indicates the proposed guest house could be permitted and meet UDC requirements if the applicant extends the driveway for the primary residence to the rear of the property. Again, there's a 23-foot span between the HVAC and the primary of the primary residence to the side property line to extend the existing driveway. And if that were done, the change in zoning would not be needed. Planning Commission recommends denial as well. Thank you.
Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Evening, everyone. My name is Stanton Porter. My address is 73 Church Street, Winder, Georgia. Here on behalf of Kristen and Philip Gibson. I've known Gibsons for a long time. Actually, grew up with Kristen. You're going to hear her speak. She's the property owner, purchased it. This is their residence here in Oconee County, longtime residents of Oconee County. I think that it's a little bit different tonight than normal sort of request, because there's a lot to unpack in terms of how we got here. There were, you know, honestly, some mistakes or, you know, maybe even fraud on part of prior people that have put the Gibsons in honestly, a pretty big mess. And so what they've tried to do in hiring me and engineer to do the drawing is to do things the right way, and that's what we're trying to show tonight, and to clean all this up so they can accomplish what they thought they could have in the very beginning when they purchased this house a couple of years ago. So I know that a guy just mentioned where the property is. This is image I took from Google Earth. Actually, the driveway actually had an old name. It was Bridge Road. This property, prior to the development of two houses, when there was a rezon back in 2020, it was to split what was a larger lot into two lots under AR and to build these two houses. A builder built those two. At that time, this was not a named road. It wasn't called Bridge Road, although it still shows up on all the maps as Bridge Road. The delivery drivers try to deliver things through Bridge Road. And I'm going to show you some pictures of what it looks like here at this entrance. But these two houses were built. A guy named Stephen Dickinson, he lived in this house, and he is the one that sold this house to the Gibsons, and he's the one who built this guest house that's on the back part of the property. And so we've got a rezon, or just a change of conditions, but technically a rezon to allow use of this entrance here and some other variances, basically, to allow a second driveway to a guest house, and then they'd like to add a garage. The purpose of all this is Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law, who's here, or Mr. Gibson's mom, they'd like to move her in, finish this guest house. They've done no work on the house themselves since they bought the house in May of 2022. It's in the, I think the builder had to come put some windows that he had promised to do prior to closing. It didn't happen until technically after closing, but it is still in an unfinished state inside. It's, there's no power to the property. There's not septic. It's essentially the condition that it was when they bought it, or it was supposed to be when they bought it. They, after they purchased this, they, and I'm going to show you what they were looking at, that they didn't have any idea any of these were any issues when they bought it. They went to the county to get a septic permit, because they had talked to some people about finishing this out so she can move in. And we're told that you need a 911 address for the septic permit, and it then learned from planning that this structure, one, that they couldn't do this driveway here, and that also the structure was not even built with a permit, and that the builder or the seller slash builder of it definitely knew that and did not disclose. In fact, disclosed the opposite to them when they purchased this property. And so their sort of solution in meeting with planning and talking to myself was, let's file for all the things that we need with the county, pay whatever, not just for a permit fee, but the penalty of two or three times that building permit fee, hire an engineer to come and inspect the building to make sure it meets all the building codes. Let's bring this up. I mean, they are tremendous rule followers themselves, the Gibsons are, and so they want to do it the right way, and that's what we're here for tonight. You saw the site plan for the property. It does mirror exactly what you saw in the aerial photo. The two places I'm going to have you look at on some photos are, one is what the entrance looks like, which is largely unchanged from when the Gibsons bought it, and actually, historically, if you look at street views going back 20 years, is largely unchanged. We're also going to look at what it looks like in terms of what a driveway would look like along their house. It's, you know, I know that staff says technically there's enough distance. It's not a solution. It's not a way to put, without doing incredible amount of work, and you're going to hear from Ms. Gibson that that's not a, they won't do that. They won't put a driveway there. It just practically, it doesn't work. And so I want to show you a little bit about the fault or the blame for this. And so the Gibsons, you know, they weren't, they'd bought houses before and hired real estate agents. And so they go to purchase their house. They have an agent. As many of you know, that when you buy a house, oftentimes you get a seller property disclosure statement. This was attached to that contract. And so the reason I've included this, I wanted you to sort of see that, I think that the Gibsons did their due diligence. It's not typical that when you buy a house that, when somebody discloses things to you on these statements, that then you'd say, well, I'm going to come down to Planning Department. I'm going to confirm everything that they've put in this statement. Or I'm going to go and check and make sure that all the building permits were actually taken out on the house that I bought. And so this was that statement that was signed by the seller. This box here, it says, "Has any work been done where a required building permit was not obtained?" I've highlighted it for you. It is checked no by Mr. Dickinson. Again, you heard from Mr. Herring that, one, the guest house was, construction was began without any application for a building permit or any kind of variance or special use exception that would be needed to do it. But then he applied for it and withdrew, and then the closing happened. And so the Gibsons, for all they know, they've been under no kind of notice to go inspect anything else that there's any kind of issue with this house itself. It's, you know, disclosed to them. If they'd have said yes, then that would warrant further investigation on their part. I also, let's see. I also want to read, I thought I had it in here, but I don't see it. I want to read from you the listing, the actual listing from the seller. When they put in MLS, what the listing says, the last sentence of that says, "The rear of..." Let me say. It talks about "The rear of the property features a separate garage cottage that's currently under construction. The estimated completion is April 22 of 2022. This space will include three garage bays with an unfinished space above. If the buyer chooses to complete this space, it'll be suitable for living quarters, office space, or apartment. The rear of the cottage has privacy fencing, fire pit, firewood storage." And then this important thing here is, "The cottage has a separate driveway accessed from Highway 53 that could allow for potential rental opportunities. The entire property's fenced with established landscaping." And so the very thing that the Gibsons were looking for when they were trying to buy a new house in Oconee County was, one, for them, their two kids, but also wanted to move Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law with them. And so that was what was attractive about this. They saw that listing, inquired about the house, put it under contract and purchased it. What I've shown you here is what the actual drive looks like. This is, there's, I'm sure everyone's driven by this property on 53 near Garrett Road. Their entrance is on Garrett Road. This is right down from T's Corner and Striplines. This, there's a large culvert that has been there for presumably decades. There's asphalt paving, not a true curb cut, but essentially an asphalt cut with a well-established gravel drive. None of this was added after the Gibsons. All this was present when they purchased their house. It was present when the zoning was done for this in 2020. And you can't quite read it, but I think you're going to hear Ms. Gibson talk about the signs that she had to put up to get people to stop using this drive. Delivery drivers, utility workers that were doing work on the, to cut stuff down from the power. They all used this drive, and we're using it because it's been established for many, many years as a drive. And what we're asking for is not to establish anything new, anything extra, but just simply let Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law access this guest house one or two times a day from a drive that's already there and been there for decades here in the county. The other option, and what the planning staff sort of points out, is that, well, you could access the property from the Gibson's current driveway. And so this is a shot, looking down their driveway. You can see on this image, well, in both of them, you can see the guest house on the back of the property. And so, you know, in terms of, from an engineering standpoint, is it technically feasible to do some significant grading, a retaining wall here, take out their, of course, their basketball goal, lose any kind of parking that they would have here, because obviously this would have to stay open as a drive to get in and out? And could you put a drive here? Yes, you know, maybe technically could. I'll show you here on the next image. If we look at from the other way, there's also, this is an area that water collects. So the driveway would go right through this area. There's a drain. If you can't see it super well, but there's actually a drain here for water runoff. And then this is Gibson's bedroom, and so they're talking about having a driveway come right by their bedroom. And then the driveway would come right through the middle of their grass backyard. It's, you're going to, I'm going to let her talk more about it, but it's not an option for them. You know, if it's technically an option, then so be it. But, you know, their sort of remedy would be to look for something else for them and their mother-in-law, because it destroys the character and what they were looking at of a house to have, you know, essentially a large concrete drive along the side of their house and then in the middle of their driveway. I want to sort of show you what the drive looks like from the guest house itself. And so the image on the left actually shows if you're looking out the gravel drive, and they're perfectly fine leaving it as a gravel drive. If that was, I honestly don't know if it matters to the Commission whether or not it stays gravel or it's paved, but it is. I mean, at one time was a road, and then a long time served this mobile home that was here. And so it's a well-established gravel drive that would come up to the house. And this is, included this image here of the house. This is what it looked like right before purchase and, or excuse me, right after, because they did add windows after it. And I think I mentioned that the builder had to come. There was amendment to the contract. I didn't include it in the slideshow, but there was amendment to the contract where the builder said, well, I'm going to come put the windows in after closing. And so if you saw in the staff packet that there, you know, was construction work done after the closing, it wasn't anything the Gibsons did. It was the seller just doing something they were supposed to do before the closing happened, and the windows just didn't come in. And so in terms of, you know, why shouldn't you grant this, or what would be the harm in granting this? I really, I understand, and they understand that we should limit on 53. I mean, it's, obviously, that area is growing. I've been here and spoke about the growth in that area a number of times. And so that area is growing, and I certainly understand we should limit that. This isn't creating any additional traffic that would be, any additional cars that would be turning on 53. If you forced them or some future owner to access this property from that drive, they're going to have to turn on 53 either from Garrett Road or from this drive. I mean, it doesn't create any additional traffic. We're not asking to add a new residential structure. This can't be sectioned off into, under the AR zoning. There's not enough land to cut this into a new house and sell it separately. It's got to remain as a guest house unless there was a rezon. Obviously, that comes back before you. It also, it doesn't create a new cut or entrance onto 53. This has been there for decades. People driving there, they've all, you know, I mean, there's sort of a use to knowing that it's there. You see it there, and like I said, it's been there for decades. And I also believe that their circumstances in particular, and things that I really don't believe that are their fault. There were a number of unfortunate things. I mean, honestly, downright fraud in some documents that were presented to them in purchasing this, where they didn't get what they thought they were getting. And when they discovered that, they said, you know, Oconee County, we want to fix this. We want to do it the right way. We'll pay. You know, if there's extra fines or fees, we'll pay, and, you know, if we need to go after the former seller, we'll do that. But it's, there's an extremely unique situation where I don't think that this is going to generate some sort of precedent that anybody that wants to just create another entrance on 53, they're not going to be able to look to this case and say, my situation's the same, because this situation is so unique in their situation. And so we do have two variances. I know they weren't addressed, and they'll be separate, but I do want to just touch on those real quickly. Essentially, one of those, you've got to have a variance to have a separate drive for a guest house other than the main driveway. Obviously, that is completely moot if you can't access, if there is still a one-foot no access easement along there. And the other one, in just sort of designing what that house would look like for Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law, they'd like to add a garage. If you look at the house in the image on the right, it makes the most sense for a little carport, not even a garage, just a carport. It makes the most sense to put it on the left side of the house versus you've got these windows over here that would just make a carport. Just aesthetically, it would look better. The design of the house on the left, again, they didn't pick the location. It encroaches, basically, it's about a two-foot variance is needed to encroach the setback to put that carport. That is the most minor thing of any kind of request that we're asking today. If that was a deal breaker, that is not like. In essence, it's, we're coming to the county and say, we want to do all this right. That's one of the requests that they have, and to make this a little bit nicer property. And so just explaining sort of the tenor of everything that's being asked, it's not like, well, we're trying to redo all these things. It's just asking what to be done. The last thing I wanted to say, and I'm going to let Ms. Gibson talk, is the Gibsons, since they purchased this house, they have paid taxes on this accessory structure since 2022. I went back and looked at their tax bill. It's got a value of an accessory structure. They paid taxes on it. There was no notice of any violation that was given to them. Again, this is brought to, they were the ones that came to the county. There was, this was not a, hey, you've got a violation notice. And so you need, and they just sat on their hands and didn't fix it. They didn't get a violation notice and then come and file things. It was them going, prompting to come to the county. Now, you heard Mr. Herring say that there was a notice issued last April. We were six months into the process of applying, getting site plans done, working with the county on fixing it at the time that notice was submitted. And so, and nothing's been done on it, because we've been trying to fix it. But they paid taxes on it on a property that they didn't even know was unpermitted and couldn't be accessed by the drive that was already there. And like I said, it's got, it looks like a driveway. The fence is cut out. It'd be, you know, it's very harsh to say that somebody buying it based on what they were disclosed to would not think they could access the back of their property from a, they didn't put, the Gibsons did not put this fence up. It was there. And so we're just asking that you take the uniqueness of this situation and grant our rezon request to allow the entrance here. So I'm going to let you hear from Ms. Gibson, and then I think her mother-in-law is going to speak too.
Hi, I'm Kristen Gibson, 1030 Garrett Road. And some of this is going to be repetitive from what Stanton said, but I appreciate you listening to me and giving me a chance to talk. So I wanted to start by just sharing a personal story to how we got today. So in June of 2021, my father-in-law passed away during the height of the COVID pandemic. He was a vibrant man who suddenly became ill, and due to the restrictions that we all know were in place at the time, he passed away without any of us by his side. My husband can't be here tonight because he's out of town for work, but he would want you to know that that profoundly had an impact on just how him and myself viewed how we would care, you know, for our parents as they continued to age. We really just determined that no other family member needed to go through this experience. His passing left behind his wife of 50 years, my mother-in-law, and now she lives alone, far away from us. She's up in the mountains. So in early 2022, we made the decision that we were going to sell our current home in Oconee County in search for a property where she could live closer with us, her family, and be around my children, her grandchildren, be able to be a part of dinner, band concerts, baseball games. You know the drill. We wanted to make sure that she got to spend the time with us. When we discovered the property, you can see why we were immediately drawn to it. The listing mentioned a separate accessory structure, which they assured us could be converted into the living space and advertise the private drive. So it really did seem like it was the perfect thing we needed. It wasn't finished. We saw that as a plus, allowing us to customize it to her needs. They intended to have the garage bays with the living space upstairs, but we quickly agreed to just close it up with the windows and doors, and we'd finish it when we were financially ready to do so. So fast forward to when June of '23 came around, and we were ready to start the process to make it into a livable space. However, when we applied for the permits, that's when we were shocked to discover that it had never been officially permitted. And of course, the information, as you've seen, was never disclosed to us through the process. I went home and personally reviewed our closing documents and found that there was no mention of it. mention of it and had, in fact, had the statement affirming that no structures had been added without permits. And at that time is when I reached out to Stanton and the planning department to figure out where do we go from here. I was a very uneducated homeowner at that time. I literally didn't know what to do to make right by the situation. We also were unaware of the access restrictions on Highway 53, which predated our ownership. We certainly understand now that there was a restriction, but we didn't know it then. We were certainly relying on licensed real estate agents to guide us through the process. It was mentioned during the planning meeting that the plat's been marked since 2020. At the time, we were unaware of the need to pull the plat to check. And honestly, even if I had done so, I don't know that I would have known what I was looking at. So we've certainly felt taken advantage of by parties, selling agent, listing agent, our agent, who, you know, were involved and really were there to protect us. As Stanton mentioned, another note, it is Amazon delivered there for six months. UPS delivers packages there. Like he mentioned, I had to put signs up that say exit only to stop them from opening the gates and driving into the property. The power company, when cutting limbs off the lines, instructed their drivers to come in. And even this morning, when my husband left the house, waves tried to take him out of that entrance. So I say all that to say that I think it's understood how, given its current state, I don't think anybody would know it wasn't a viable entrance point to the property. We're not seeking the rezone to create a new problem. We simply want to make use of a structure that already exists on our property and reinstate an entryway that's long been there. Our request is solely focused on my mother-in-law and her having a safe, accessible living space where emergency services could access the property if needed. When it comes to her day-in, day-out use, there's not going to be an additional trash pull and those types of things. She's truly going to live as part of our family. We just want her to have her independent space. I understand that the planning department deems it could be played, oh, wait, I got ahead of myself. The variance with the carport is just simply so she has a safe place undercover to come in and out. You couldn't see on the side of the structure, but there's a side door that's already there. So it just seems like the logical place without having to disrupt the rest of the structure. It just is a beneficial add-on, but as Stanton mentioned, it's not really why we're here. I just wanted you, you know, to know. A concern was raised at the planning meeting, what should, you know, what what do we do with the space if something happens to my mother-in-law? I know that sounds weird to say with her sitting right there, but what happens if something happens to her? And I just want to be clear that this is a property that was purchased for our family. It's two and a half acres. It's not that big. It's not that far away from our personal home. My parents are both still living. They might need it one day. I have kids that maybe will want to come home to mom and dad for a little while one day. Maybe not. I kind of hope my son will one day. But we're not looking to create a rental property. We're not looking to add to the schools. We really do respect those growth plans. We respect that. That's part of the reason I live here and love living here. It's our personal property, our family home, and we just want to keep it that way. So we hope you can see past these unintentional oversights and recognize that we're simply trying to provide a safe space for my mother-in-law to live out her final years close to us and our family. We really are doing everything in our power to avoid disrupting the community and comply with your regulations. And we intend this space to be an extension of our home and just one that can be accessed in case of an emergency. Like as Stanton mentioned, I think it's prudent to say that this is our only option. This is the end of the road for us. And I know that's, you know, my family's problem and not yours, but the driveway up the side, I hope you could see how if you were living there, that's that's not an option. And so we would have to just pursue other things. And I would respect your decision if that's what it was, but I just want you to know that what planning's laid out isn't something that works for my family. Once again, we're committed to following all guidelines, paying all files, fines, doing anything we need to. I appreciate the time and consideration and thank you for letting me talk.
My name is Jolanda Gibson. I live in Elah-Jay at 492 Water Oak Drive, Elah-Jay. I'm here to speak on behalf of Philip and Kristin. Philip is my middle son. I have three sons, but Philip has been the only one that has decided that he would like to take care of me. I feel very blessed to have a son that cares that much. In the beginning, when they were looking for a house, when they sold their house, they didn't tell me they were looking for a place for me to live. And I found out later when they found the house that, and I was just overjoyed that they were looking after me. I'm very long somewhere I live. I have no family there. All my boys live two hours away. So, and I wanted to mention also that I do have some health problems. It may not look like it, but I do. I'm a diabetic and I have cancer, I mean, not cancer disease, I have kidney disease. So I don't know how much longer I've got on this world to live, but I would like to be close to my grandkids. That I have two I have two grown grandkids that are married and have their children. And Philip and Kristin have the younger set that I'm able, if I live here with them, I would be able to get to go to their Sam's ballgames and Natalie's, she's in the band. And that would give me something to look forward to for the rest of my life. So I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I'm sorry I got a little emotional, but when she mentioned my husband dying, and we were married for 50 years, it was very traumatic for me. And I just feel honored that Kristin and Philip want to look after me. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak against the rezone? There, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for questions from commissioners.
Let me go ahead. Excuse me. I'm going to direct these to you, Mr. Porter. And if you think the question's inappropriate, you don't have to. And I understand. Either you're going to create sympathy for your case or not. I don't know which way this is going to go. So my questions are to, to, you know, kind of bring it out in the open about the circumstances. From listening to your presentation, Ms. Gibson presentation, I understand. So there was a buyer's agent involved in this transaction?
Correct. The Gibsons had a real estate agent that represented them.
Okay. I don't want to know their name.
Okay.
Maybe good to know, but anyway. In the process of the closing, there's, I'm sure, an attorney involved because there's a deed on record. Did the Gibsons have their own attorney involved?
They did not. It was just, I mean, technically, they got a loan. So technically, the attorney would have represented the lender that conducted the closing. So it wouldn't have, would not have represented the buyer or the seller.
So so they had no access to the title opinion or any of the the documents that the attorney generated on behalf of the lender beforehand? They, most attorneys usually have a title opinion that they issue to, you know, to the bank to.
Sure. So, I mean, I do real estate closings, so I just trying to give a little light to it. Like, basically, I mean, the the deed itself, and it says that the property is subject to all easements and things of record. And so did the Gibsons have access to that? I mean, everybody gets, you know, a stack of paperwork. It's not the title opinion. That typically doesn't, you don't get that prior to closing. Typically, and this would be in their case too, they didn't get anything from the attorney prior to closing. We send a title commitment with a title opinion to the lender, you know, 30, 45 days before the closing.
Man, can I just interject one thing? Was there an owner's title insurance policy?
They.
Did I what?
Get a title insurance. If they did, they, I'd have to go back and see. If they did get title insurance, it'd be after, like, you don't get that until either at closing or after closing.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions, because I know that attorneys, and I forgot that you're sitting there, Daniel, so I'll watch what I say. But I know they have, you know, less than except and all that. And but you mentioned that it was financed. And so that was going to be my question. I know most mortgage holders want title insurance, but it only protects the mortgage holder. So you're not aware that that the Gibsons purchased title insurance?
No, if they did or not, I'd have to go back and look at their closing statement. If they did, and I don't know if this is sympathy either way, I don't know that it would be covered because technically, they could, you know, somebody could have gone to the courthouse. They could have gone to the courthouse and looked up the plat and looked in all the writing that's on it from 2020, when the property was split. And there were three conditions that were placed on it. Like, I'm not hiding and saying that that was hidden. They didn't know about it.
Can I just interject one more thing?
Yeah.
Stanton knows this. You know this. I've done a lot of closings in my life. Pleasant attorney should have explained this regard.
Should have what?
Should have explained this issue to them.
Yeah, most most closes I went to, the attorney would say, no pay, no stay. That's all they said. So.
They would not have bought this property. They would have said, we're not buying it at closing. If the closing attorney had said, you can't, you know, you can't access this property from that driveway.
I guess this is for the record is a lesson to anyone who may listen to the video afterwards that, you know, the old saying, buyer beware. I don't, that's been around 100 years. Buyer beware, right?
Yeah, caveat emptor, certainly. But, I mean, like, again, it's not the commission's fault, but their seller certainly misled them in saying.
I understand. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, there's that old adage, buyer beware. So I make sure I understand that the work that was done on the structure, unpermitted structure, was never, don't the, the seller was the only one that ever did any work on that?
Exactly. So.
Of no other contractor, no other?
They had an amendment to their contract. The Gibsons and the seller had an amendment to the contract that said the windows were backordered. And we're going to have to come and install the windows. They're going to look like the amendment said. It's going to look, it gave sort of a description of what they would look like. Those windows were installed after the closing, but the the Gibsons have never hired any contractor. They've never done any work on the property themselves. It's still, other than those windows being added, it's still in the same unfinished interior state that it was when they purchased the property. It didn't have power to it. So.
So I assume you can always seek other remedies against the seller? Is there some liability there?
I mean, I think there is. I mean, I think the law in Georgia is buyer beware, but the question really in that is like, what would a reasonable person or what would somebody in that same situation with reasonable, you know, sort of actions do? I think in this case, the Gibson's actions were very reasonable. There was a listing. Those listings mean something. They're not legal documents that said you can access it here. There was a seller disclosure statement that's part of the contract that survives the closing where the seller signed saying, I promise this is what it was, that everything on here is permitted. So the question in terms of buyer beware is, well, was if there was some sort of fraud, like if he had checked, no, yes, there's something on this property that doesn't have a permit, that would have put them on notice to come down to the planning department and further investigate. But but it's very reasonable to rely on what they had. And so, yeah, I think that they've do got remedies. And we, basically, what we're doing, to be honest, is waiting to see what the outcome is today, to see what remedy we're going to take against, you know, seller or real estate agents. And our hope, obviously, their hope is they don't want to move. And so our hope is, well, can we go recoup these extra fees and obviously my fee and these other expenses? But it may be a lot more than that, depending on the outcome tonight. And whether we can get that, you know, I mean, whether we can ever collect anything like that, I don't know. But I mean, that's what we're going to do after today.
Whatever this body does, I think, yeah, I think for the, it would be be appropriate to, you know, let these other people know that they, you know, they can't do this sort of stuff.
Absolutely.
The real estate agent, the seller, you know, because, you know, even though it says buyer beware, I understand. It's a pretty sizable investment that the Gibsons have done. I noticed the transfer tax was $880.
Okay, they paid right at $900,000 for this property.
Yeah, pretty sizable investment. And, 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 I mean, yeah, you're right. Most normal folks or common, you know, run-the-mill folks don't know to do those sort of things, you know, to check on things, you know, like, I always hear, well, I didn't know that the property across the street was zoned for a pig farm, you know, I mean, you know.
And and I agree. I just think this is even further because it's not that they just didn't check. It's that they got the wrong information from the seller. Because it's one thing, if you say, well, I didn't know it across the street, well, that's sort of on the buyer to maybe go check or the real estate agent to check. But here, they were given false information as part of the transaction. I mean, part of that purchase price was because it had this guest house. Like, that was a value that they gave to this property that they can't do.
Maybe the Gibsons maybe have been too trusting then. They may not be so trusting now. Is that right? Yeah, yeah. I understand. And like they said, who was, they said, you know, we've, we trust you, but we're going to verify. Yeah. So, all right. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Got a few. If you want to stand there, it may get around to you too.
Okay.
This one is a little bit different. I've heard a bunch of them, but you never hear every example. Mr. Herring, has the current owners done anything wrong as far as the county use any kind of violations?
No.
None?
That's right.
Okay. I got two things that are more concerning. One is the pictures that were taken, I'm guessing this may have been the property assessment folks, whatever their title is, that they took the pictures while that guest house was being constructed?
That, yes, sir. That's correct.
Again, Gibson's didn't have anything to do with it at that time. They weren't even in the picture.
That's right.
Okay. Would it have been appropriate, in your opinion, if the property assessors had notified code enforcement? And the reason I'm getting at is, I do know that you get called building stuff, have a permit, you get a stop work order placed on you until the time comes when that you do right.
Yes, sir.
So would that have been normal for them to contact your office?
It's not part of their requirements. No, sir.
But they're going to put it down on a tax roll.
I believe that.
It's going to tax them. And so they're paying the tax for a building that shouldn't even been built.
I'll answer for Guy, since he can't answer for the tax assessor office. My expectation would be the tax assessor would contact code enforcement and maybe issue a stop work order.
Thank you. But obviously, they didn't do that in this particular case. It doesn't appear to be.
That's correct. No, they did not.
Doesn't appear to be. Okay. But they have paid taxes on that structure. They can't get a permit. Okay. The driveway. What, it appears to me the driveway shouldn't exist, but we have allowed it to exist for however many decades. And I'll tell you, it looks good, too. I mean, it, the fence and all that. And I, so the problem there is the county has allowed a long time driveway to exist. It shouldn't be there. So they see it. I see it. I might think it's legitimate. Obviously, the Amazons and the UPS folks own it. So that's my my problem is that these folks have done nothing wrong as far as the Oconee County use it. But now they're toting the goat for it. That's, that's how I view it. So.
Can you go back through the timeline again?
Yeah.
We rezoned in 2020. Right?
Yes, sir. And then the owner at that time was Dickinson, and he applied in 22 for the garage.
That driveway existed for a mobile home at that time? That driveway existed for a mobile home at that time?
That's right. Yes. And, yeah, for, since eighty-five, right?
Yeah.
And so the structure was substantially built in January.
When did the big house, all its permit?
I, I don't believe I have that information with it.
Twenty twenty-one.
Garage. Started construction in two thousand and twenty-two?
Uh, it, it was substantially under construction January seventh of two thousand and twenty-two.
Then he applied for a permit?
April.
In April. We know what sparked that. Under construction. What happened to that April permit?
Uh, the staff reviewed the April permit and sent comments to him. Uh, and then we had no response after that.
Had, let's say for instance, property assessment folks had notified you, your office, and stop work order had been put on it. That, I guess, looking like what I just saw. Would y'all have bought it?
We, the picture he saw was to say it was in point first towards the property and, you know, that's where it was at. Oh, we're gonna do the garage day, but we just finished it out. That's what we made. First the windows and there's our door. We knew there was timing. But that's what it looked like to me. We went under contract. We did a thirty day due diligence period. So we went under contract April thirtieth. Do, do the math. There was a, oh no, we're under contract. Let me go try to pull a permit. But at no point in time will we be notified of the comments, the complaining committee. Even if we'd been notified and they sent their comments, we would have pulled out at that point in the fall.
So when, when y'all looked at it, it was under construction? Okay. And, and they, they finished it before you signed the documents?
They came back after it had been painted.
Um, Mr. Herron, before you leave, I've got a couple of questions. Um, can you pull up the aerial view?
This one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, has anybody looked at paralleling Highway fifty-three with the driveway? The other structure?
Not, not that I know of.
Do you see any objections to that?
Uh, other than the variance, other than the code requiring it to use this primary drive?
You can still use the primary drive and then route around. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, you may be able to. I was just looking at all the topo on it just to kind of get an idea. There is a, a ditch that's down along Garrett Road that might prohibit that. But, um, if you paralleled fifty-three, then you could have a second driveway, but that would be a violation of the UDC.
Well, thank you. Come in on the existing driveway instead of going straight, you go around the other side of the house on the fifty.
You guys blow that map up a little bit.
Leave their proposing septic in this location.
Yeah, um, it, it appears that all of the septic should be fine if you, because you would want to go between the, the ditch line and the, and the power pole. Which looks like most of that's cleared anyway. So you wouldn't be making additional trees. That's just one option.
Their option, there's power poles down through there that I think would make it harder. Um, once again, this goes back to personal safety. The twenty-five thousand dollars playing trees for privacy to grow up right there. And I know that's a personal problem. Um, but it, could it be done? Sure. Um, but then also she'd be turning out kind of right at the end of, of Garrett fifty-three, which feels dangerous. And I don't know about the power poles. I mean, there's a lot of power poles in this property, but I don't know if we.
This is one, one of those that feel like, uh, had some other people done right, we wouldn't be having to make a decision and get called in the middle. Uh, but unfortunately they didn't and we got to make a call. And, and I, and I understand about the ordinance, the rules. In this particular case, you know, I'm speaking for me. These folks hadn't done anything wrong. They hadn't done a thing wrong.
I'm, I'm very sympathetic to it as well. I get, guess the problem with keeping access there is not what this family is gonna do, but what's gonna happen there in the future. Trying to look down the road, but, and it, the, yet it's a comedy of things that happen, but God, it's years.
Well, could it not be conditioned to where if they sell it, that, that drive's gotta go?
I guess, but you're gonna, you love it. I mean, I guess the bottom line is that all their goals can be met other than where that extended that driveway with the existing condition that we put on it in two thousand and twenty. I understand what you're saying and I'm, as we look at future, we're removing driveways, we may need a condition that someone's got just to keep the visual part of that open, but.
This one's got a host of errors. If they didn't, unless somebody can show me, they got to take advantage of them. I hope they find a remedy from that. What we're, what we're dealing with is that lady and her husband. And what can we do? Let them get on with their life. I understand the thing about the driveway, the driveway's been there. Been there. God knows how many years. It's not like it's just popped up.
All right. It was permanent back in eighty-five, we, former transportation, but that was whole part of the whole way they were getting these lots together and removing the trailers what led to that. But we dealt with it and, yeah.
Yeah, but for some reason that, it, it looks good. I'm gonna tell you that driveway looks pretty good.
So is there's, as far as the D, because this is DOT, that's not counting. Um, so is there still an active permit for that driveway?
As far as I know, they don't expire. I mean, that's what I'm saying. In, in the future, whether it's county road or state road, that may be something to look at.
Well, some of them.
Driveway that require that over to be removed.
They, and they do that. Um, they were, if you abandon that driveway, they require you to remove it. And, you know, in certain cases, the landlord doesn't remove it, but it's still abandoned.
That, I don't know the answer to that part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, it's nothing we've ever seen before.
Yeah.
But I, in my, in my opinion, it doesn't appear to be abandoned now. It doesn't, it seems to be in operation and people can use it and stuff like that. This one just.
You have a question?
Not really a question. I mean, the fact of that, the fact remains that when they were building the future house back there, they were still using that driveway like crazy, building it. And everything was going into that driveway and you remember going by there after it was built and still seeing trucks. So the, Mr. Dixon was still using it as a entry and exit for his trucks, because they were parked out back. So I don't, I mean, it's been, been used the entire time. So I, I said, I'm kind of like to entertain that conditioning thing for the future, but you saying that, good luck on that one. But, um, can we do that?
Oh, I don't know. That's a Daniel question. Daniel?
Daniel. So, say exactly what you want to do.
Let them have access to it, but when they sell it, it goes away.
That would, to me, be a abandonment of the driveway.
Essentially, I think. I mean, it's, uh, does something to their property.
It's gonna affect you in the future if you decide to move, because if we do this, that's for sure, because you're not, you're not gonna have access to that back house unless.
This is not my forever, forever home. Um, this is my home for my kids for the next twenty years. So they grow up and leave me and I go follow them around somewhere or wherever they, you know, decide to go. Wish I could say it was my forever home. That wouldn't impact, but that would impact.
Would you have objections to looking at, you know, an alternate driveway? It's a sentimental ban. You know, if, if you're adamant about that, then that kind of puts the onus on us to stick with what is there. What you just said, I'm not willing to do anything to fix the problem. It's us to fix your problem.
That's not what we're trying to solve.
I understand, but, but I thought, Mr. Thomas, you were talking about maybe running down on the other side of the house where it would not run by your.
But you said there's that ditch. Have not considered, I mean, I don't know with power poles and all, you know, how that really, how that works. And, and I don't know, having a drive entrance that close to the stop sign of Garrett Road and fifty-three creates a safer environment for, for turning in and out of. Have we explored it? No, because it, it felt unusable. They felt the power.
I'm, I was getting, I was sympathetic, but I just, it just kind of hits me a little wrong way when you have no willingness to try to, you know, to, to. Yeah. Well, can we give the Gibson's time to, to look to, look into that?
I'm, I'm just asking if that's appropriate action for us just to. I think we have the ability to table it at this point.
I'm not, personally, I would, if I were in your shoes, I would try to pursue something as an alternate driveway. For one, you know, you're talking about safety. Coming out on Highway fifty-three, you know, with you being as an elderly lady. I can just think about my mother trying to pull out on Highway fifty-three. That's not a good situation. And what I, I realize that, but that's already an established intersection. And so you've got that one. And then you've got a driveway that's, you know, just a few hundred feet. So that's definitely a no-no in terms of planning driveways and that kind of thing. And that's one of the reasons that this one doesn't have access, because you've already got an intersection. And. Well, the, you know, the power poles possibly could be relocated to, you know, a little further in to the property. Or either further, you know, closer to the right of way, whatever that would take. You've got a couple of things you've got, and, and this is one of the, the things is that you've got your septic system that you've got to make sure that you don't impact that. So your driveway, the best, better option would be closer to Highway fifty-three. At that standpoint.
Entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to table this and, and give the planning department time to work with you guys and see if there's an alternate driveway, um, plan and then come back to us later on that.
We have a motion in second. Table rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two eight seven. Would you like to include in that motion the other two items as well? Variance P
Yes, sir.
Zero two eight eight and zero two eight nine.
Absolutely.
Daniel?
For the next regular meeting.
So we have motion second to table rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two eight seven, variance P twenty-three dash zero two eight eight, variance P twenty-three dash zero two eight nine. Any discussion? All right, this will go to our November meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right now, we'll move on to variance request P twenty-four dash zero one three five, Frank and Rachel Secora. This is a request to allow a guest house in the front yard. It's four acres at twenty-four eighty Barnett Shoals Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty-four zero one three five, Frank and Rachel Secora. Applicants and owner. This is C zero five zero zero eight A A off of Barnett Shoals Road. It's currently zoned A G in the country states character area. Again, the property on a request of variance to allow a guest house in the front yard. Uh, this is the concept plan that you have in your application package showing the location, proposed location of the guest house. Uh, staff recommends, uh, approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner, the agent at owner?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patrick Perry, seventeen twenty Lexington Road, Athens, Georgia. Um, I'm landscape architect, uh, on behalf of the applicants, Frank, Frank and Rachel Secora. I don't believe they're able to make it tonight, but the, the builders here, Bill and Kim Craling with ETL Construction, uh, they, they do, uh, they're gonna do the house for the Secores if, if you guys grant the guest house variance. Um, we was contacted back in May about helping them out with this. They want to get a, a guest house there for the pool. Um, the property is four acres, house sits back in the back. Not a really great place to have the house except for in front of the house based on the location. The septic's in the, in the, in the back. Uh, so it's not feasible to really put the guest house in the backyard. Um, we have the great care to kind of, kind of screen it from the neighbors. There's a lot of woods out there. The neighbors aren't gonna be able to see it. There's currently screened for two hundred plus feet off the road. So you're not gonna be able to see the house on the road, uh, mature trees. Um, so, you know, accordance with the regulations, this is gonna be architecturally, architecturally compatible with the main house. It's the only guest house on the lot. Um, you know, it'll be fifty percent, uh, no more than thirty percent of the existing heating area of the existing house. Um, and the only other regulation that we're, we need to meet is get the special exception variance approved because it's a four acre parcel, not a five acre parcel. If it was a little bigger, we wouldn't be here tonight. If it was a little bigger, we wouldn't be here tonight, but because it's only four acres, I'm here to request y'all's approval for this variance. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Anyone wish to speak against? That will go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve variance P twenty-four dash oh one three five as presented.
For motion second, approve variance request P twenty-four dash zero one three five, with conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone, Commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda? If that will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as it submitted.
For motion second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
I think motion carries. Mr. Sax?
Motion adjourned.
Okay, we are adjourned.